Okay, hello, everybody. Welcome to City Council Meeting, February seventh, you're buying donuts, two thousand twenty-three. Thanks for joining us in council chambers and for everybody live watching us at at home or wherever in the world. We appreciate you being here. We're going to get things started like we always do with a spiritual thought or motivational message, and then and then followed by the pledge. Councilman Euler has got our prayer motivational message tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've invited Teresa, who is the teacher of the Latinos in Action class at the Spanish Fork High School. She would come tonight with some of her students to get up and kind of explain what Latinos in Action is and then give our prayer. So Teresa, we'll turn the time over to you.
Do you want me to talk about Latinos in Action?
Absolutely, whatever whatever you'd like to whatever order you'd like to do it in.
We'll do the prayer first.
Okay.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're very thankful to be here this evening to be able to partake of this important meeting, and we ask thee to please bless each of us to be able to relay the messages that we have come with and to be able to have open hearts. We ask that our meeting goes smoothly and that everyone that has prepared something can do so. And we ask thee that when the time comes that everyone may be able to travel home safely, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
So I have my laptop here. So yeah, so Latinos in Action, we are a group that is over at Spanish Fork High School, and we are we are a state program, and it is offered in nine states throughout the country. And so Utah is one of the awesome states that gets to have that program here. And our mission statement, I was gonna have one of my students read it, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Liz? So yeah, because I want them to be able to experience speaking in front of everyone.
Okay, Latinos in Action, LIA, offers an asset-based approach to bridging the graduation and opportunity gap for Latino students. Working from within the educational system to create positive change, our program operates as a year-long elective course taught by a highly qualified teacher at the middle school, junior high, and high school level.
Thank you. Can you tell me her last name? Liz's last name? J U B R A. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and then we have Leah Ochoa, and she's gonna read our goal.
So the end goal of everything we do is to empower Latino youth to lead and strengthen their communities through college and career readiness. We accomplish this by focusing on four pillars: leveraging personal and cultural assets, excelling in education, serving the community, and developing leadership skills.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have David.
Ready? Because of its unique combination, the LIA model has proven effective throughout the United States. In 2015, LIA was awarded the White House Bright Spot for Hispanic Education by the White House Initiative on Excellence in Hispanic Education.
Thank you.
Okay, so as you can see, LIA, we do a lot, but we want to do more, and especially here in Spanish Fork, where the Latino community is really starting to grow. We see that at the school, and we see it in our in our city and in our state. And we want to be able to, you know, help all of the Latinos feel like Spanish Fork is their home, and that is our goal. Karen Avila, she is the current president of the LIA class, and she is gonna talk a little bit about the involvement that we've had this far, and then kind of we'll wrap it up and talk about what it is that we'd like to do moving forward.
Hello. Okay, so our involvement this far in the community, we have helped with Harvest Me Hurra in the city, and we helped make balloon animals this year as I was senior in my class. This year, we've made balloon animals, and then last year, we did face painting. And then we've also helped with Tabitha's Way, that we helped go package some sort some cans in Tabitha's Way, which is really exciting. And then we also have done elementary school readings and help little kids just read, have a little bit of fun, and get to help around our schools and our community. In Spanish Fork High School, student council meetings and activities, I am proud to say that I am proud of student council this year and helping represent our school and LIA in many different ways. We have helped with Wednesday Student Body Activities. We have activities sometimes every Wednesday that we help with, and we have given hot chocolate and donuts. We have done cultural things to spread awareness throughout our school. We helped with Hispanic Heritage Month, which was awesome that we helped, we had cultural dancers come into our school and dance and show everyone our culture and our the colors of being Hispanic. We have Cinco de Mayo Celebration and Education, and then Dia de los Muertos, we celebrate at the school too. And then every year annually, we do a LIA graduation ceremony to graduate those LIA members that are going to college and moving forward with their life with successes. And then we get the opportunity to go to conference in May at the U and see the rest of the community as in LIA, different schools, and we get to do workshops at the school, and it is amazing thing to have, and it's an awesome opportunity to go to.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, we want, like I said, we want to be more involved in Spanish Fork, and we want to be able to be a good resource for all of Latinos here in Spanish Fork and just anyone that visits our amazing city. We are hoping that we are gonna be able to be a part of yesterday's, have a float, and have be able to attend City Youth Council too. We hope to do that. And at the school level, we want to be able to do a PTA, but for Latino parents, because we want them to be more focused and more involved in their children's education, because I've seen this year that if parents are more involved, then children, teenagers are more able to do well in school, their attendance goes up, their grades go up, and then therefore they go, they have a higher chance of going to college and pursuing a higher education. And then we also want to be, I want to encourage them to do sports tryouts. A lot of these kids, they don't have that person motivating them to try out for sports right now, so that's something that would be huge, as well as like club involvement and then attending school functions. And then to wrap it up, we would like to just kind of introduce this idea that we came up with for if when we were in, if we go to the parade and all these things, it's kind of like our slogan, and it would be called Campana, which is bell, and that our slogan after that would be El Sonido de Nuestras Raíces, and that translates to the sound of our roots. And so the bell is an important part of Spanish Fork and Spanish Fork High School. It's a symbol that you can see when you look up Spanish Fork, and then the same thing with the high school, we have a bell there, and so the bell is kind of just symbolic of that. And then everyone has roots, whether you're Caucasian, African American, whatever it may be, right? And that's pretty much it. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa. Were some of you young ladies speaking to KSL the day that KSL was there?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, you did really good. I heard you on the radio right after I got done. So very good, very good job. Very good tonight, all of you. Very good, very good speaking. Thanks for coming and joining us. We appreciate it.
Mayor, can we get a picture with them?
You bet. Come on up, guys. Stand up, face face this way. We'll stand behind you. You stand right here facing that way, and Nick will get a good picture of all of you here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two.
We shake your hands. Is that all right? Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Great job. Thanks for coming.
Teresa, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Good stuff. Thanks for starting our meeting off very well with with that information. We appreciate you coming here tonight. Okay, that'll take us to item B, the pledge led tonight by Councilman Carden. Please all rise and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to item C. Yes, item C, employees of the first quarter. I think we have some people here to present that with us tonight. Nick Porter left the room, but I think Jamie, are you up here to present that? All right, Jamie Chapel is going to present our employee of the first quarter.
Mayor, Council, I'm here today to introduce one of our very fine employees. Butch, come on up. I gotta put my glasses on so I can see. So this is Hayden Nelson, to many known as Butch. He's married to wife Giovanna Giovanna. Together, they have two kids, a boy, Brantley, and a girl, Aria. Did I get that right? Yep. Good. His parents are Jeff Whites Nelson and Cindy Nelson of Palmyra, lifelong residents of Spanish Fork. Butch has been with us for over seven years and is a member of our Streets and Stormwater Crew. He's a Senior Operator One, has completed all his requirements and training to earn his Rhodes Scholar Certificate. Some of his responsibilities include the operation and maintenance of the sweeper truck, tree trimming, site issues, as well as special events like hanging our yesterday's banners. He also helps in all other aspects of our department. Butch loves baseball, football, the Cowboys, I don't know why. He outdoors and loves spending time with his family. He also enjoys belting out a song or two while out in the field with the guys. He was lucky, I was lucky enough to coach him on our Bad Boys baseball team and watch him grow from from a boy. He's become an outstanding man and a great dad. He's very hardworking and a dedicated member of our team. The city is lucky to have him. Hayden is well-deserving of employee of the quarter.
Thank you. You get to stay up here. You get to say anything while millions of people are watching, Butch.
Before he says something, I just want to echo what Jamie has said. Luckily, there's no sound on this. This is, this is the sweeper truck, and I was able to spend a morning with with Butch in this sweeper truck and manipulate a bunch of these buttons. I think it took a while, took a while to teach me how to do it.
You had to fix it after.
Anyway. One of the things that really impressed me is how much he really cares about the city and and what a hardworking individual we have in Butch, and just really impressed with him. I, I think you spent a little too much time in that sweeper truck, because we probably talked nonstop for about three hours. Like, I feel like I did learn more about public works and what we can do and and things in that period of time than I ever have in any other three hours, and I really enjoyed it. I came home, I was talking to Karen about that, about what an enjoyable morning it was, and how much really good advice that I got from Butch, and it's kind, it's changed our department in a lot of great ways. And so here's someone who really cares about the city, who works hard, who doesn't just do his job, but he thinks about what what can we do to make things better. And so just really can't think of anyone more deserving of this. And so we want you to just say a couple words, if you, if you're willing, and then maybe start here and just shake everyone's hand. Is that all right?
Well, in my defense, it is very lonely in the sweeper truck. I'm dealing with it by myself, so it is, yeah, it is sometimes nice to have somebody to talk to, but I'm, I'm honestly feel lied to because I was told I was here for another reason. It wasn't about me, so I'm super grateful for for this, and that, I don't know who all votes, but that my peers, you know, thought that I deserved this, and this is a great place to work. I have the best bosses and teammates, or whatever you want to call them, and the whole city that I get to work with every single day, and you guys make it super enjoyable to be here, and they, these guys all make us feel like we're cared about all the time, and I think that's awesome, and that's not something you get at every job, and I, you know, so you guys are doing a great job, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to work here.
Awesome. Thanks, Hayden. Appreciate it.
You know, if we make them speak every time, no one's gonna wanna be.
Yeah, yeah. They won't come. Stop doing the good work, right? That's good stuff that you get to see. A lot of people, you drive around town, you drive around other other towns. Hayden comes from from good stock, good family, but but cares a lot about the work that he does, and it shows in in the clean streets that we get to, we get to drive on and and keep maintained in the city. So it's cool to put a face with and a name with with those lonely times in a in a sweeper truck, so. Just give him a wave. There you go. Thank you, Hayden. We appreciate it. All right, one more employee of the first quarter here is going to be introduced by our library director, Mr. Scott Aylen, who's got nothing going on in his department, like a new library or anything.
It's a slow time at the library these days. We just have nothing going on. Tia, do you want to come up here? In my three years as library director, we haven't had a library employee selected as employee of the quarter. So we're excited to have Tia here tonight and recognize her for her accomplishments. Tia, we hired her on about three years ago as a part-time clerk, and she quickly stood out both from her experience, but as well, in addition to that, her education that she was getting in library sciences and services, and quickly rose the ranks as someone that was not only going above and beyond, but identifying solutions to issues that we faced at the library. She was promoted last, last June to be a full-time catalog librarian. So the catalog librarian is responsible for our catalog, which consists of seventy-five thousand physical items, that we got to make sure that those are, you know, categorized and cataloged correctly so that patrons can find them. One of the old card system, right, you can think of now, it's all on the computer, right, but we still have to make sure that that's organized. And Tia took what was five individuals all contributing to that catalog and took that all on herself and made sure that that was done well. And so some of the bullet points of what Tia has accomplished, both as a part-time but also as a full-time employee, include, again, outside of her responsibilities, at the time, as a part-time clerk, she was identifying ways to improve our catalog and shelving procedures, which included developing a new label system for our books that provided for unique call numbers and shelving locations for each item, so that each book has its own specific place within the building, which is very beneficial for us and our patrons. She's always providing alternative perspectives and ideas, having worked for two other libraries. As I mentioned, she was promoted to librarian and took on the responsibility of cataloging all of our materials, a responsibility that was previously shared by five different employees. She became the supervisor for a new position that we created and developed a shelving accuracy test to measure employee performance. She identified and incorporated a software solution for updating and cleaning up catalog records en masse. She's assisted me in leading various projects, including one that was relabeling all of our materials in preparation for moving to the, excuse me, new building. She represented the library on the planning committing for Planning Committee for the City Employee Olympics, and she's done all of this and more with a can-do attitude and innate attention to detail, while also managing a full course load in her Masters of Library Information Sciences program, as well as significant personal and family health concerns. Tia is the type of employee that not only takes on challenging assignments willingly, but she also identifies solutions to problems in each of her assignments. She doesn't shy away from asking questions to ensure that there is understanding among all of the parties involved. Tia also positively accepted and incorporated constructive feedback and has sought to ensure that the opinions and expertise of others are considered when making decisions. She's an exemplary employee of both the library as well as Spanish Fork City. So we are grateful and so happy to have Tia as a member of our team as we get ready to move from our existing building to the new building and just make sure that our level of service is just top-notch, and and Tia has been instrumental in helping us make that transition. So super happy and grateful to have Tia as a member of our team, and I'll let Tia take a couple minutes to toot her own horn, so.
I feel like my face probably matches my shirt right now. I just want to express my gratitude for, I'm honestly doing my dream job right now, and I didn't expect to get to do it before I finished my master's program. And I, like, relabeling pretty much an entire library has been something I've wanted to do for years, which I feel a little bit insane looking back on that dream, because it's been a lot of work, but it's been really rewarding too. And I, I'm really excited about the the changes we're continuing to make that will help our new library function better for our patrons and for our staff, too. That's important to me, too. And I, I feel like a lot of the positive changes we've been able to make are because we have Scott, and Scott's willing to listen to ideas and make changes, even if it means extra work. So it's, I feel like from from day one, my first day when I was touring around the library, I heard them say they were thinking about changing the call numbers, and I was like, you're kidding, and started to geek out and create spreadsheets. And showed my spreadsheets to Scott about a month later, and even though I was a newbie, he was willing to listen to my ideas. So super grateful for that. It's been a really positive experience, and I have a lot of awesome employees I'm working with that are a great team. So thanks for this, even though I'm blushing really hard.
Congratulations. Yeah, I think we'll get a picture right here. Yeah.
Whites, you can stay back there.
Level two ball. He's gonna get in this picture.
I don't think he is. Look at him. He's like, I want in, I want in.
All right, one, two, three, one, two.
Thank you.
Very, very good. Two different departments of the city, two necessary departments to the to the pride and progress of Spanish Fork. So very, very cool people, and what I, it's a great place to work because of great people like that. So Tia and Hayden, thank you for your your good work. We appreciate it. Before the next item on the agenda, I neglected to mention, you can see we're a little bit light up here on the dais tonight. They have not left Spanish Fork for greener pastures. They are still here. Councilman Orgyle is taking care of of his. Councilman Orgyle, uh, is taking care of, of, uh, of his wife Teresa, uh, who's, uh, who's just had a, a medical procedure. So, uh, we wish them the best as, uh, as he takes care of her and, uh, and Councilwoman Beck is on family vacation. So, uh, we'll, we'll give her a hard time when she comes back from that. Uh, it's, she went somewhere warmer than here for sure. Uh, so, uh, we miss them, but, uh, we'll try to hold the fort down while they're gone. Okay, uh, item D next up is our CERT presentation and, uh, yes, we've got graduates and, uh, and our great leader of, of CERT here in Spanish Fork. We appreciate you.
All right. Good evening, uh, mayor and council and everyone in attendance. Thank you for having myself and the, the recent graduates for the CERT team. Uh, a few months ago, I was here presenting, uh, about the CERT program and what we do, what we cover and, and who all is involved. Uh, we recently graduated, uh, or tonight's the, the graduation, but we recently finished a program, fall 2022, uh, spring 2023. And I've been blessed with a wonderful program of, of students. This, this is my third class, um, but my, my biggest class. Uh, we had 18 attendees of the, of the program and a handful of them were able to attend tonight. Um, so just a few pictures of our recent class. This is some of our training. Uh, the left there, you can see we're putting out some big fires with assistance from our fire department. Uh, we learned about emergency carries, uh, evacuations out of a building. And then, uh, cribbing on the right, which is, uh, utilizing leverage to lift heavy objects off of, off of somebody. Uh, some more, uh, training, some medical assessments, emergency carries, and then we have a program what's called Disasterville, which, uh, we have a, looks like a, a kid's playset there, but, uh, we kind of create an aerial view of the city of what would be Spanish Fork. We play along with it and we create different scenarios. Uh, and we, we talk about different deployments and how the CERT team could be involved, uh, in different responses around the city. So that's a fun little activity. And then here, just a few weeks ago on a Saturday, we had a mock disaster, uh, which kind of brings in everything that we learned. We, uh, you notice the large picture in the middle, we, we invited some students from the American Leadership Academy and they were, uh, very excited to participate from the theater drama program. Uh, and they got all new razzed up. They got the disaster makeup put on there and they were having a ball. Uh, and I believe our team did as well, which they're in the back, they're in the green. Um, so we, we, we did a, an earthquake scenario at the Veterans Memorial Building. And, uh, you can see the top right corner there, the first entrance of the team, lights were out, right? And debris was spread out throughout the room. And then you can see the tarps and the medical triage that the team performed. Down below, they met before and kind of had a, a pow-wow, a, a command post, what we call it, um, before the deployment. And, uh, this has been a, a really great program, a great team, and it's neat to see this program grow within Spanish Fork. I've mentioned before, we have a team of about 500 in the city and that number continues to grow. And I've seen my numbers in the class continue to grow each time. And so that's very exciting. Uh, so I'd like to present, uh, those that are here, if they would come accept their award and maybe we can get a picture.
Perfect.
With them. Uh, so Allison Coway. Uh, Gavin Grow. Sherry Coons. Jenny Miller. Mason Miller. There you go. Uh, my own parents and sister attended the class, so my sister's here, Kelly. Kelly Sperry. Shawna Warnick. Valerie Evans. And Lisa Chen. Thank you all. I forgot to read a quote. Uh, it says, "Leaders should try to build cores of citizen responders. No city will be able to manage a crisis and rebuild without the help of its people." Uh, and that's from Thomas Menino. He is mayor of, of Boston, right after the Boston Marathon bombings. And I truly believe that there's people like this, like these people here that are willing to take the time to attend four weeks of training and a, a Saturday morning to go through this training to become prepared, uh, not only for themselves and their families, but for their neighbors and their community. So I thank you all very much for your time and effort in this program.
Right? Yeah.
I don't know. It's barely, it's barely alive.
Self-select, maybe the shorter ones.
Yeah, throw a few up front.
It's self-select.
All right. You're great. Okay, one, two, three. Trevor Hoppin.
Trevor, yeah.
Where's Trevor?
Come on, Trevor.
Come on, Fred. You can go on the front.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. Yes, please.
Shake your hand. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. No, you're all right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Sperry, good work. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
It is.
Uh, with that program. You don't have to go too far in, uh, you know, in world news to, to know, um, incidents, emergency incidents that are happening around the world currently. And, uh, and we're fortunate that people, people like you are willing to volunteer, step up and, and learn a thing or two so you can help us. Uh, it's not, it's not if, but it's when. Uh, we, we deal with emergencies in a city. So, we appreciate your training and, and taking it seriously and being willing to, to help uplift where we need to. And, yeah, Trevor, we can't thank you enough, man, for, for doing what you do. Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, uh, let's see. Takes us, uh, next, uh, down to item number four, uh, public comments. Anybody from the public that, uh, is here at council meeting tonight that would like to address the mayor and council? Yes, Mr. John?
I haven't got anything bad to say.
Well, then sit down.
It's okay if you do.
You know, uh, I just wanted to come and, uh, thank you guys. It's nice to see you here. But, uh, thank you guys and the city. I had a chance to talk with Dylan a few minutes ago. He was out in the lobby when I came in and, uh, for the work that you guys are putting in on Eighth North. I think you'll find that that will pay off in the long, in the long run, uh, getting that, uh, Eighth North, Fourth East corridor taken care of, Eighth North, Second East taken care of. I know I spoke with Jesse the other day about an issue and also with Kevin. And I did have an opportunity to bring it up with, uh, Dylan and that has to do with, uh, completing that Eighth North run by, uh, some very inexpensive, don't get nervous. There's about three spots on Eighth North on the south side that needs to have a sidewalk put into those areas. There's like three little spots. And, uh, the reason I say that is that everybody knows how busy Vossa is. If you've ever tried to get down there and do some exercising, you have to walk a mile to just get into the place. But, uh, while I was there, uh, a gentleman came up, I don't know why he came to me, but he came up to me and and started talking about the issue we have of a lot of young mothers and that, that are bringing their kids and they go into the, into the, uh, classroom there with the kids and then they go out and exercise and come back and pick their kids up. And he says he's starting to see an influx of, uh, mothers with strollers coming down Eighth North back home because we don't have a whole lot of affordable housing. And one of the areas that that area is still partially affordable is the older homes in, in that area. And, uh, they're taking their kids out on this Eighth North across that area where there's no sidewalks. So, I would, uh, suggest that we get an opportunity, you get an opportunity to kind of review that and see if there's a way that we can put some sidewalks into those three areas that, uh, I highlighted with Kevin and Jesse and see if we can get that taken care of and then that'll complete Eighth North. And you guys have done a wonderful job. I know I had to sacrifice a little bit on my piece of the, the puzzle, but I think it'll be worth it for this, the city because, uh, I don't know if you've gone down Fourth East lately and seen the traffic that's developing down Fourth East. But, uh, I'd just like to say you're doing a good job and that, uh, we appreciate what you do. And, uh, I know I've had, I'm, I'm gonna take some of the plans over to my neighbors there so they can see what's going on. So, uh, I appreciate it again. And that's really all I've got. So, thanks a million again. Nice to see y'all here doing your work.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. If not, we'll move to council comments. We'll start with Councilman Euler.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of things. First one, just a reminder for our seniors that have signed up and registered for the Valentine's Dance. That will be taking place this Friday, 6:00 PM. So just, just a reminder on that, don't forget. And then, next topic for me is a, it was one little more, little more difficult to talk about. Sorry. We lost a member of our community on Saturday. Young man, just 17 years old. I knew him as Big Dylan because when we lived in their neighborhood, he's just a few months older than my son Dylan. So he was Big Dylan and my boy's Little Dylan. And just wanted to express my love and condolences to the Silva family. Difficult, difficult situation that they're going through right now. Just want them to know that the city, that we as a city and as a community love and support them, their family, um. Anyone, anyone affected by this, the students at Maple Mountain who were friends with him that are going through a hard time as well. Just wanted to bring this up on the screen. Valentine's and winter time months, when the days are short and nights are long, can be very difficult for a lot of people. So I would hope that as a community, we can come together and bring awareness to suicide. With the suicide crisis line of 988, there are people always there ready to help. If you are struggling and you need help, reach out. Please, please look for, for assistance, look for help where you can. Another great resource is the liveonutah.org website. I would invite everybody that's watching to go to that website and learn about how you can be a resource and how you can become a help to someone that may be struggling with thoughts of suicide and, and depression. So, with that, um, again, our, our thoughts and prayers to the Silva family. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. Councilman Carden.
I just want to echo what Councilman Euler just talked about is there's too many people who suffer, suffer in silence. Let's make sure that we're talking to those that we live by, that we care of, our friends, and not, not suffer in silence. If we're struggling, let's let someone know. We have some crisis lines, some different places we can go to. It's, it's sad that this happens all too often, that we lose a, you know, a member of our community and that we, we have some resources out there, but let's make sure that we're asking those questions, having those tough conversations with each other, um, because we all go through those ebb and flows of life. And it's important that we, we don't suffer in silence, that we, that we talk. So, thank you, Councilman Euler, for sharing that. Um, on to some, some, maybe some different news and some different things. Um, I want to congratulate the Spanish Fork Drill Team on taking first in military and dance in, for the drill and second overall, and Maple Mountain High School took fourth overall, which is pretty cool. Um, I also was able to attend my first airport board meeting, mayor. And in January, we had 5,812 landings or takeoffs during that time. Pretty incredible that our airport is that busy. Um, and then lastly, I want to turn some time over to Kathleen Lovett from the chamber, so.
Thanks, you guys. Mayor and council. Nice to see you all. Um, so I sent over some pictures. I don't know if you got them. Okay, awesome. So, um, we do take pictures and we do fun stuff, so I wanted to be able to show you guys, um, in my announcements if we can. Um, but we had our ribbon cutting, um, for Jersey Mike subs last week. They were amazing. We probably had 35 business owners show up for that, which was amazing. We came to welcome them and then they turned around and gave everybody that came free lunch, which was pretty amazing. They're such generous, um, people over there. Like, we're lucky to have them in our community and in our chamber. Um, I did want to put up a couple photos from the gala that we had since our last, uh, meeting. We filled out, we want to say big thanks to the River Bridge Event Center for helping us put that on. It was a beautiful event. Those of you that came, um, we were so happy to have you. Um, and sorry that you couldn't come, uh, Councilman Marshall, that was sad, but. But it was a great event. We had a really, really good turnout and some really fantastic awards were presented. So, I was super pleased with how that all turned out. That was us swearing and some of our new board members. So we were super, um, super excited to have everybody there to witness that. Um, coming up, we've got, um, our new networking on Thursday, February 16th. Um, it's gonna be at the Veterans Memorial Building. I'm personally super excited for this one. I heard this keynote at a women's retreat that I was at, uh, a couple months ago. Um, we're hearing from the founder of Pearls with Purpose. Um, she's a local Utah mom of five who has now, um, she founded a nonprofit that trains women with leprosy in, in, in leprosy colonies in third world countries to make jewelry and then import them to the U, US. So she trains them to have their own businesses. Um, and she's done this, I think, in five, um, countries now. So, and she's here, right here in Utah. So just really excited to hear from her, uh, just showing what we can do when we put our minds to it. You know, businesses really do change the world. Um, and we're doing it right here in Utah, which is amazing. So I'm excited for this new networking. Um, we have the Core Ribbon Cutting tomorrow, February 8th at noon. We've got America First Credit Union. Their new, uh, building is opening up on the 17th at 8:00 AM. Um, and then we have Bills with Bagels. The second event is gonna be Saturday, the 17th at 7:15 and that's, the location's been moved to the Summit Center in Springville. Um, but any details on any of these events, you can visit our social media or our website. So, thanks for the time, you guys. Appreciate you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Kathleen. Thanks, Kathleen. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carden. Councilman Marshall.
Thanks, mayor. Um, first of all, Kathleen, sorry. I apologize for not making it. I thought I was doing my, my, my very best to attend another, um, commitment I had for the city council and I, I get, I'm on the garbage board.
We made fun of you. We made a mention of that while we were there.
I'm like, "All right, I'm gonna be prompt. I'm gonna get there." And I, I was, uh, one minute before it ended. So, I thought I'd start at six. It started at five. I could have been to both. Um, it was a very bad scheduling snafu on my part. So I apologize. Um, I'll be there next time. Um, but I did tend one, one minute of my commitment last week.
Be quick.
Yeah. It was easy. What'd you say? You should, never mind. Um, Parks and Rec Met, we went over the, uh, rec center layout. Just keep the evolution of that thing moving forward and, and we're getting closer and closer all the time. I want to say again, thanks to us North Pole operators. This has been a crazy winter. I can't say enough good things about them. Every time I walk out of my house, 11th East is plowed. It's just, I'm very, very thankful for that. I did get to attend my first drill team competition of the year this year, uh, which is, again, almost like a terrible, like a tender of things, apparently. Um, my niece is on the, on the drill team in Spanish Fork. It's the first one I saw here. But they did awesome. Um, they took second, like Jesse said, and Maple Mountain took fourth. It was a, it was a fun little day. Um, so congratulations to them. Um, that's basically all I have. It's all you.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Marshall. Um, uh, my comments, yeah, thank you, uh, Councilman Euler, Councilman Carden for touching on, 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 um, a tragic loss in our community when that, when that happens. I want, uh, you know, I want the residents to know. I want especially the youth to know, um, your mental and physical health. Uh, we said a long time ago in Spanish Fork. We said a long time ago in Spanish Fork that the cavalry's not coming. No one's coming to help us enough for that problem that we have in our community. And so we're trying to take measures to make sure resources are available to you, just like what Councilman Euler mentioned there. Tara will remember this because back in the day, she was our youth city council coordinator and we had an incident in our youth city council back then that a young woman died by suicide. And it was tragic, just as tragic as this one is that happened recently in our community. But maybe that meeting after that tragedy was pretty sad too, in that when you talk to some of those youth and said, hey, this is something you got to talk about and work through and deal with, and some of those youth were worried at that time that if they talked to somebody, if they talked to a counselor at school, that maybe that would have a record for them, that maybe now that would be in a record, that they needed to talk to a mental health advocate or that they, you know, needed to maybe take medication or something like that. So they were really fearful about talking about that. And I remember back at that time, it really did, it broke my heart that, look, the data shows that it's the opposite. You need to talk through those things. There are people available, professionals available. We're not professionals. There are professionals available for you to reach out. Reach out to your parents, reach out to your friends. And like Councilman Euler and Councilman Carden said, it is on us to reach out to each other. Reach out to people. Ask how they're doing. Ask how your kids are doing. Ask how your friends are doing. Ask how your relatives are doing. And again, you don't need to have all the answers. There's professionals that can help with that stuff, but we do need to be willing to listen and to love people for wherever they're at, wherever they're at in their journey. So our thoughts and prayers are with the family up on the east side of town for sure and everybody that's suffering through something. Aspect that goes a little bit along with businesses in our community, our economic development department, Kim Brenneman and Dave Anderson have been nice enough to put this together along with Pete Hanson and SFCN that we're going to try to do the rest of this year, but businesses in our community that apply for a business license and are brand new and our chamber is such a good advocate to make sure they're welcome to the city. And so we're trying to be responsive as an elected body as well and make sure that they know how much businesses mean to the community and to the Chamber of Commerce. And so Pete allowed us to go present a business license renewal to another local business this month in town and it's kind of poignant for the month that we're dealing in too. So if you'll indulge us for two minutes and three seconds here, this is something that Pete put together.
Mayor.
How you doing, sir?
Good. How are you?
Really good. Good to see you.
Good to see you again.
I was down at City Hall. They told me you renewed your business license, so we're here to deliver your business license and just tell you thanks for being a business in Spanish Fork.
Well, thank you and we're glad to be here.
Well, we appreciate you. We appreciate you the other night at the chamber.
I got installed as the vice chair of the Board of Directors is what we got. Yes.
Well, good luck with that.
Yeah, that's, well, as you well know, that's a three-year term.
Right.
So I'm looking forward to it, actually.
Good, good. Well, we appreciate your chamber membership, but we're going around telling, making sure businesses know how valued they are in the community as well. And you guys have definitely been one of those community partners, so.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Important month in the jewelry business. I know I heard the other night at the chamber banquet as well that you've got a Valentine's special going on.
Yeah, Valentine's is our second largest holiday of the year and we do, we have a great special going on. We have, anybody that purchases a hundred and forty-nine dollars or more gets a free dozen red roses, a box of chocolates, and we partnered with Texas Roadhouse here in town and they get a free dinner at Texas Roadhouse as well. So a dozen roses at Valentine's is going to cost you at least a hundred and twenty-five bucks anyway, so why not give some jewelry with that?
You take credit card?
Yes, we do.
All right. Came to the right place.
Yes, you did.
Well, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mayor.
We appreciate all you do and thanks for running a great business in town.
Thank you.
Great business, Rasmussen Jewelers, 654 North, 800 East in Spanish Fork. Amber, I hope you didn't watch this, you would know what you're getting for Valentine's. Thanks for a great business and thank all of you.
Thank you for making sure that happens and again, thanks to our technical development department for keeping us, Seth? That's Nick?
Oh, I got it.
Businesses that apply for a business license and renew a license, we're going to try to randomly, you know, pick a couple and make sure they know, they get love from the chamber all the time, so that maybe sometimes they need some love from elected officials. So thank you. Let's see, an airport meeting, Jesse mentioned, he's our airport board representative there and they've had a meeting kind of in a way, I don't know, just a last minute way. We had Congressman Owens come and visit us last week in Spanish Fork. Councilman Marshall and I were able to run down to the airport and meet him and his chief of staff there along with Chris Thompson, our city engineer, and Christian, our airport city manager, our airport manager. The good thing about that meeting is that Congressman Burgess Owens sits on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. That's one of his assignments back in D.C. and part of that subcommittee is airport. And so he wanted to tour our airport, he toured Provo's as well to get a better idea of what our needs and plans are down at the airport. It was a very productive meeting. We're looking forward to sharing data with him and his staff to hopefully put us again at the forefront of the mines when it comes to rounds of funding. I like Councilman Marshall's way that he puts this when we're talking about federal funds. It's some of your dollars, it's some of our dollars, right, that we pay to the federal government trying to come back to Spanish Fork. And so just know that we're working hand in hand with Congressman Owens to try to get that to happen. Second to lastly, I've got another thing, but our great community partner, Wendy Osborne of Tabitha's Way is here and would like to give her a minute to give us an update on statistics of what's going on down at the local food pantry.
Thank you so much for letting me just pop in and share this information with you. Thank you, councilmembers, for your service and everything you do. I'd like to add really quickly, just thank you too and congratulations to Tia and Hayden for what they do for our community because it makes our community great, so grateful for that. Just wanted to just share just some stats from 2022 in our Spanish Fork pantry. Last year, we served 1.9 million meals, 44,972 individuals, 11,511 households. From that, 2,600 households were from Spanish Fork or roughly fourteen percent was from Spanish Fork's citizens. And so our pantry saw in Spanish Fork, a 56% increase in the number of families needing food assistance. As an organization, Tabitha's Way saw a 53% increase. And so what we're seeing is a lot of families that are just struggling with the inflation and high costs of things and we're seeing families that were not previously in a socioeconomic bracket needing food assistance, that didn't need it before. And so these numbers, again, we can't accomplish this without the help of our citizens and our community leaders. And I just wanted to say, these numbers are startling. This is a record number of individuals as an organization being served, over 95,000 individuals as an organization serving these families. But we can't do this without the help of so many people. Would like to also thank you guys for coming down and sorting cans because without the cans being sorted and checked, that's food that doesn't go on our shelves. And so, and the food donations and all of these things are what make our organization work. We've had over 11,000 volunteer hours at Tabitha's Way and these are people who just step up and whether that's helping us sweep and mop the floors, restock our refrigerators, check our cans and check more cans and check more cans. We just can't do this without the help of so many people. And so I want to just express gratitude to our community for the honor of getting to do this work and for the help that allows us to do this work. Coming up here in March, there will be a Feed Utah Food Drive and Tabitha's Way will be one of the locations where people can drop off their food, so we invite you to participate in that and we'll have some volunteer signups for that if you want to come help sort cans and handle cans and stuff like that. It'll be a really fun day, but so that's coming up here in March. And again, I just wanted to show these numbers and just let you know that there's been a significant impact on our community, as you all are very much aware. Each of you have come down and volunteered yourselves at Tabitha's Way, which I'm totally grateful for. But again, this work can't get done without many, many hands and the support of many. And so I just wanted to express thank you again. Thank you, thank you from my heart and also from those families that we serve who are truly grateful for that temporary food assistance that we provide as a community. So that's all I had, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Appreciate it. Crucial part of our city and helping out those less fortunate. We appreciate all the good work you and your husband do. Thanks a lot. Okay, lastly, there's a speech going on tonight in the nation, the world really watches it, called the State of the Union address. And so we had it lined out to do a State of the City address, but we didn't want to take all the hundreds of millions of viewers away from the State of the Union to the State of Spanish Fork City Address, right, Seth? Is that what we decided on? And so we're not going to do that on the same night. I will call this maybe the first and the last official state of the city from this room. You can see tonight where we had some awards and some families and people in here, there's not, there wasn't an empty seat in this room here. And so we are excited to temporarily postpone the Spanish Fork State of the City Address that, you guys aren't getting out of that, by the way, you're going to have to be a part of that, but we're going to do that at the new council chambers that'll be across the street and that'll be ready before you know it. We'll do that in May. And so instead of that, what we did was ask Seth Perrins, our city manager here, to give us a little bit of a year in review in pictures for Spanish Fork and some explanation of what you're about to look at here, which I can't emphasize enough how excited we are as an elected body, as a mayor and your council for the successes that we've had in 2022. The opportunities that are ahead for us in 2023 are tremendous as well, but I hope you get a sense after we've had an annual meeting as a council and a work session to go over some of the pretty big items that happened in 2022 for Spanish Fork, for your city and again, how that sets us up for success in 2023. The state of the city is strong, I can promise you that. It will continue to be strong because we have such good people at the helm, directors and employees and everybody else in the city, including all the volunteers that make this city a great place to live. So with that, Seth, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to be kind of fun. We'll do this in picture format and we'll move through it fairly quickly. Just starting though, for just a moment, we'll highlight a couple of statistics. First of all, the city, according to the 2021 estimate, our population is 43,870. So a big number. We estimate however, actually over that same number, we'd say we're about 47,000 residents. But what that translates to is about 12,900 homes in Spanish Fork. And I want to highlight some of these before we kind of jump into the speed. This shows you the growth of our utility accounts and one of the things that's unique about Spanish Fork is the number of utilities that we have. And these are the various services that we provide to our residents when they wake up in the morning and go to bed at night and throughout all of the day, the different services that touch our lives on a daily basis. One of my favorite things to look at is some of our discretionary services, such as those offered by SFCN. You can see the trend of cable TV over time and that's just a function of what we as users want, where more and more people want their services over some kind of a system or service such as Netflix or Disney Plus and so they call that cord cutting. This is one of my favorite things to see, landlines, right, it started and then is quickly dying. But my favorite line of all on here is this internet line and you can see that its trajectory is different than all of the others as more and more residents of Spanish Fork have access to our internet service, which they all do, but a greater percentage of our residents take it. That is a discretionary service and I think we estimate about eighty to eighty-five percent of our residents choose that service, which speaks highly of the quality of it. So this gives you a sense of how many different services and I said 12,900, but we have more power customers than that and that's because sometimes they have two meters on a service and things like that. So we don't, we can't count electric meters as a source. All right. If I had oxygen tanks, I'd hand them to you because we're going to run through these fairly quickly. This is going to be super exciting. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on these things because all of this stuff happened, right? This is just a year in review, so I won't get into a lot of the facts and figures. There are, all of these departments report to the mayor and council through the city manager, community development, public works, fire EMS, police administration, library, parks and recreation, legal, finance and SFCN. And all of them do these great things. So we started out the year last January with a brand new mayor. After eight years with Mayor Laeson, Mayor Mendenhall took office. He served, for those that may not know, he served for eight years as a council member and then was sworn in as our new mayor. So that started the year and Councilman Marshall, Councilman Euler, you also joined him. And by the end of the year, we had run out another council member and so by the end of the year, we brought in Councilman Carden, sorry. I mixed Gordon and Carden together there.
Impressive.
What's really interesting is we started the year, if you look at the faces on the screen, three of the six faces are different than in 2021, but four of the positions are different than in 2021. So a lot of, a lot of change has happened in our council just in a year. All right, in the police department, Chief 6J1, Steve Adams retired in January after 34 years of service. And a few days later, we swore in Chief Matt Johnson and he had the honor of being sworn in by his wife, who happens to be the Honorable Christine Johnson. She, by virtue of her position, could swear him in. In August, we had a real tragic circumstance happen. The police department investigated the homicide of an individual near the Harbor Freight in North Park. Due to some excellent police work, that individual, through coordination with police in another jurisdiction, in Ogden, they were able to find and link a couple of murders together. That case is still being adjudicated. A tragedy for sure, but also excellent police work to try to resolve that as quickly as they could. Last year, we separated the public safety department into two departments, the police department and fire and EMS. And with that, the fire and EMS department developed a new logo, new brand for their department. You can see here what that looks like, combining the elements of both fire and EMS. And the department is unifying around that single brand. In March, we hired Chief Eddie Hales as our first full-time fire and EMS chief. He came to us from American Fork and quickly we began making adjustments, changes and enhancements, magnifying the good things that our department does and bringing in great things to enhance the department as well. One of the first tasks that we gave to Chief Hales and his staff was to bring on a paramedic license. And they began gathering the data, filling out the application and by July, we had a paramedic license that allowed us, that allows us now to do paramedic care, paramedic transports in our ambulances as we serve the community. This was a major accomplishment, not only for us, but for all of, even South Utah County as we are a center of the county and a lot of the cities follow the lead that we give. In this picture, you see Guy Danzy from the State Bureau of Emergency Medical Services and he was excited to provide, to give us that certification and license. At that same time, we also hired a number of other staff members in our new fire and EMS department. You see in this image, our new deputy chief, Hoarding, fire marshal Jason Turner, and six new paramedics that started work in July. Without going into 2023 too far, we have augmented those even more this year and we'll talk about that next year. In October, we had a joint exercise at the airport where we In October, we had a joint exercise at the airport where we simulated a significant event and we were able to coordinate and practice with not only our fire and EMS and police departments, but also many jurisdictions, as well as the hospital, communicating and coordinating, practicing triage and the like. It was extremely successful and we identified a couple of things that we needed to fix that is good to identify in a peacetime event. Some of you might recall an incident that happened, we had an airplane actually crash on top of one of our industrial businesses in January. And that wasn't an airport simulation, that unfortunately was a real crash. And amazingly, the gentleman, the pilot of that plane, he did not walk away, but he was, he was carried away by our emergency crews and although suffered serious injuries, none of them life threatening and quickly was able to report back to our people that he was doing well. All right, at Public Works, we'll jump to the airport, staying at the airport, for example, or we, you can see the growth of the airport. These numbers show how many airplanes call the Spanish Fork Airport home and the steady growth that is occurring there. In 2023, we expect that number to grow even more with some software that we have tracking more completely growth and use of the airport. The growth of our airplanes is coming in large part due to some additional space of hangars. And you can see here in the last two years, we've grown by almost 200,000 square feet, some 70,000 square feet added just in 2022. During the year 2023, we recorded some 50,000 landings and takings off, as Councilman Carden mentioned a moment ago. Again, with this new software, we expected in 2023 being more accurate, these numbers will probably increase by some 40% for the year 2023. That's a lot of comings and goings out of the airport that for many of our residents, they actually may not even know about it. During the year, this slide and the next slide will show you some of the growth that's happening in hangars. And inside each of these hangars are one, two, three, five airplanes, some of them large jets, and that now call Spanish Fork home. Like I said, some 70,000 square feet were added this year and the council and the airport board have been reviewing plans for the addition of some 1.5 million square feet of additional hangar space at our airport. That won't happen in '23. It won't all happen in '24, right? That will take several years to build out, but is a signal of the strong growth that is being seen at the airport. These are some images from some of these new hangars and they're beautiful in terms of their look and in the service that they provide to those that lease them. One of the fun events at the airport is our wings and wheels. This year, we had over 10,000 people, a record crowd. And if you went there, you were able to see one of these really neat planes there. This one was a plane owned or flown rather by General Roland Wright in World War II, this P-51 Mustang. If this P-51 Mustang looks familiar, that's because you saw it featured, okay, not this one, but this type of plane featured at the end of Maverick, Top Gun Maverick. So if you like that movie and you like P-51s, well, you'd like that plane, they're pretty cool. All right, continuing in Public Works, the Power and Light Division was the Division of the Year and there are several reasons for which they were selected. Starting off the year, we, we were, through a lot of hard work and effort, able to resolve a four-year-long conflict with a neighboring power provider, SESD, which enabled us to, through the year of 2022, extend power service to a handful of residents, some who had been residents since the early 90s, but had yet never been able to receive power from our utility. We in 2022 were able to reach all of those customers through the efforts of our, the Power and Light Division and that comes on the back of us being able to reach this negotiated settlement with SESD. Highlighting their bill, you can see on the monthly bill, the average through our research, if, on the average, you can't look at your July bill, you can't look at your January bill, right? But on the average, if you're the average home, you'd pay about $67 a month, which from the nearest city and other providers saves you at least $10 a month and maybe even up to almost $30 a month, providing a great service there. Some of the other successes of that division, continued decreases in their power outages and then also continuing on the theme, just decreases in a good way. In '22, we also broke ground on, well, we didn't, but collectively a group did, of the new transfer station. When I say the word transfer station, a lot of times people don't know what that means. Sometimes we call it the dump, but it's not. It's a transfer station, it's where you take your stuff and then they carry it to another place, which is the dump.
Where I dump my stuff, though.
It is where you leave your garbage.
Yes.
This is, this new facility will actually be constructed in Spanish Fork. It will be significantly bigger than the one that Councilman Marshall goes to just off the Springville exit behind the Loves Truck Stop. Significantly larger, significantly cleaner. All of the comings and goings will happen inside of this facility rather than in the open air. So we won't have the garbage and debris flying around like they do here in this significantly undersized facility that we have today. The garbage division has a very successful program that we started during COVID, this spring cleanup, and in 2022, we hauled away 503 tons. I have a picture here that I want to highlight. This is a low light. As we use this program, a negative shout out to residents as some participate in this, sometimes the dumpsters are pulled away, right? Because we're hauling them away, maybe it's a Sunday, the dump isn't open on Sunday, so we pull the dumpsters away. And some residents, as they go, they say, they must say something like this in their heads. Well, it was here yesterday and I don't have time to deal with this tomorrow, so I'm just going to dump it here anyways. And that is lame. So this is a low light and if that was you, whoever you might be watching this, don't ever do that again. The attitude of somebody else will pick it up is a terrible attitude, you know, hold it or take it to the dump yourself, it's not that expensive, but we certainly don't want to see that. We love being able to do this as we provide this service. This year, we tweaked how we provided the service and we had the dumpsters, the hauling company just rotating all the time. And so even though we didn't haul away the same number of tons as 2022, we almost hauled, we almost made as many trips, just making sure that they never got full, trying to avoid that image that I showed you in the last slide. In October, there was a very unique circumstance, a sad circumstance for sure, as a truck driver, a garbage truck driver suffered a medical incident, causing him to lose control of his vehicle. I show this picture because today we can report that he was fine and that nobody was seriously injured. But in the nature of the city's year, this was a really significant issue, having a garbage truck end up in a home. Certainly startled the bejeebers out of the family that lives there and gratefully, thankfully, none of them were injured either. And again, everybody was okay. In August, we broke ground on a new sewer treatment plant. And if you're going to break ground for a sewer treatment plant, you use garbage, or not garbage, you use sewer vacuum trucks to turn the dirt over. So that's what that picture is. All of those weird looking things are actually very high-powered vacuums. And if any of you want to use them in your home, come and see us, we can rent them out at night. You might have to clean a little bit around the nozzle if you don't want whatever it's been doing during the day. I'm just kidding, don't, don't talk to us about that. But we broke ground on this new sewer treatment plant. Here is a visual from the freeway of what it will look like. This is an artist rendering. It'll be sometime in 2025 when this opens up. And this will provide sewer capacity for us. We are just about to the end of our capacity at our sewer plant. More importantly, we have reached the limits of our ability to treat according to state and federal regulations. So in order to continue providing this service, we have to make upgrades. We are soon going to be violating the certifications or licenses that we have. So we have to make changes and upgrades. This will future-proof our facility for many, many years for growth and not just the regulations we face today, but future regulations that we believe will be coming upon us shortly. Here are some more renderings to show you that we have designed it. If any of you have any idea what that, any of those do, good job. We'll just keep going, though. Sewer backups are trending down, that is good, really good. One of our greatest successes in 2022 was the signing of a contract with the railroad company to actually be able to build a crossing at Spanish Fork Parkway across their Union Pacific tracks. So right now, in the legacy farms, Spanish Fork Parkway, dead ends right here, a road to nowhere. We cannot get across this set of railroad tracks without an agreement with Union Pacific. This year in '22, we finally, after many years of work, reached the agreement with them, enabling us to order the equipment. Work has already begun to build this section of road and we should be able to drive across that by the time school starts up again in the summertime, late summer, early, early fall. Huge accomplishment for the city. In 2022, we continue to see decrease in our water consumption. I want to draw your attention the opposite corner of where your eye goes when you're on Google, to the bottom right. If you look here and see, this is an average of how many gallons of water we use per resident per day? Yeah, I think that's right. Per capita per day. That number continues to go down. This is a huge decrease, especially looking back some 10 years, right? We've gone down some 30 gallons per resident per day as we have grown. That is a great accomplishment by our residents. We haven't instituted any conservation requirements, no, no limiting or anything. This is simply by the good efforts of our residents and we applaud them for that work. Our streets and sidewalks, storm drain division, they continue to fix sidewalks at an ever-increasing pace because when you put a sidewalk down, within a few years, that beautiful tree that you have in your yard heaves it upward or whatever. And so they continue to work on those. You can see here, in '22, they did a lot more work even than years before. In '22, we started a graffiti task force, noticing that there were some knuckleheads out there that thought they needed to tell the world their story on walls, maybe write their name. I don't get it. But we started this graffiti task force and combined people from several different departments that had a reason to care, streets, parks, police and other people that have reason to care. And this graffiti task force has accomplished a lot of great things, including capturing this dude. Yeah, we got him. And you combine the resources of smart people who care about their community and, yeah, don't do it. Don't be an idiot. Can I be that blunt?
Yeah.
Not going to bleep that out, are they? All right, continuing on, community development. In late July, Target gave us the ability to finally announce the worst-kept secret in the history of Spanish Fork, that they were coming to the old Kmart location in Spanish Fork. Surprise! They, we expect that they will open up sometime near the end of 2023. In '22, there was also a referendum on a land use decision, the Madera Project, and that land use decision was referred for signature collection and the signature collection didn't garner the signatures needed for it to go to the ballot, but that was something that happened in our community development world. '22, there were more building permits for new homes by a large number. If you see here in 2006, that was our previous record, somewhere around 650, just over 800 permits for new homes were submitted in 2022. We saw a large decrease, though, in the latter half of the year. So if you graphed it, it was a significant downward trend, starting in certainly July, but by October, November, December, the number of new permits were significantly less. Had the interest rates not changed, you probably would have seen that number somewhere north of 900. Building inspections for year, our community development department provides a number of inspections, not just those associated with constructing a new home or business. If you're going to change out your water softener or put in a new furnace or a water heater, your fence and a number of things, there is likely a permit for some of those and you can call the city and we will actually, for anything that is an existing home, almost always, it's a free inspection. So this number will hopefully continue to go up as residents learn that if they're doing some change in their home, they can get an inspection from us, not just when they're building a house. And the reason that we offer those free is because we all benefit from Seth not doing the work and following Seth's code, you know, the handyman code of whatever. So making sure that, that projects done in homes are done to the correct standard. So a record number of building inspections in '22. In our library department, some people think that nobody goes to the library anymore. Well, wrong. There were, we had a record number of checkouts in 2022. This large dip in checkouts, I wonder what was happening in 2020, oh wait. We had to shut down the library for a while, right? So we've, we've returned back to normal operations and slightly increased as the world gets really excited about our new library that will open up next door. We also ditched Dewey in the library. If any of you know what Dewey, the Dewey Decimal System is, that was a way to organize books. When Tia was here just a few moments ago, she talked about reorganizing the library, this is part of that. It's now organized kind of like a Barnes and Noble by, by genre, a lot easier for people to find the books that they're looking for. We also had an amazing summer reading program and the goal was to read 20,000 minutes and we read way more than that in our summer reading program. They did a great job. All right, parks and recreation. In, in March, the mayor announced an initiative that the mayor and council had given the green light to study and locate a new recreation center in Spanish Fork and to begin the process of designing that. We commissioned a, the mayor commissioned a focus group that got together and began meeting, a focus group of residents. I actually see some of these folks are in the council meeting tonight and we use them to bounce ideas off and gain insights about what the rec center could or should hold. As a part of that, the council proposed to raise property taxes to cover a portion of what we estimate the eventual bond amount to be. And after that truth and taxation hearing, a referendum was filed on that property tax Snow, almost the entire, snow on the ground, almost. Associated with getting to the Festival of Lights, some were really worried or concerned about that. We have been concerned for years that traffic was backing up on Highway 6, a road that carries traffic at a speed, a speed limit of 60 miles an hour, maybe sometimes traveling in excess of that and along the side of the road, you have people parking. So we adjusted the traffic pattern and that worked out really well. There were some, some things that didn't go perfect, but for the most part, it went really well and it was a lot safer for all of the patrons going. In '22, SFCN was able to get a 100 gig circuit and a second gig circuit. That's a bunch of weird stuff to you and me. What it means is that when the internet goes out, you don't even know it because the circuit automatically flips over to this one and this is really good stuff. You and I don't know it, but last year, we had to go onto the backup circuit three or four times because there was some issue with the connection of the primary circuit. Nobody noticed, except for people at SFCN, they knew it. We also broke ground on the world headquarters of SFCN. Okay, world may be a little bit aggressive, but at least the city headquarters of SFCN. That's under construction just down the road on Center Street. It's a beautiful facility. It will open up at the very beginning of 2024. We'll talk about this more next year, but a highlight, at the end of the year, SFCN began testing what is called SFCTV, where they will cut the cord themselves and you and I will be able to get our television, if we want that product, through an internet service. Now. Now you can get it on any device. You don't need to be tethered to a cable in your home anymore. All right, our legal department in 22. For years, Spanish Fork and Salem Cities have, have shared legal services. And in 22, having grown too big on our end and Salem too big on theirs, we began the process of severing that legal relationship. And our city attorney, Walter Byrd, himself actually migrated with the change to Salem City, and is, he became their city attorney, and that was fun. Good job, Nick. That was a big change, though, wasn't it, Vaughn, separating from Salem? That was, there were some, some sorrows, you know, that go along with that, some nostalgic things. We've, we've had a long relationship with Salem City that way. In 22, we actually had to make some significant changes to how we administer our salary system due to inflation and, and a lot of issues around salaries for our employees. So we did an adjustment in, in May, June, and a sec, and our typical one in October. We brought the fellows to Spanish Fork, which we do every year. That's always fun. And we had two classes of graduates in Spanish Fork University. This is a very successful program. And in 22, we saw two groups, a spring and a fall class. And we will have two classes again in 23. We commissioned a puzzle, a dowdle puzzle. Hopefully, everybody listening to me has purchased their dowdle puzzle, but if they haven't, we do have some still remaining. This was an excellent way to tell the story of Spanish Fork and enjoy that at maybe the dinner table or puzzle table. We sold those at the Fiesta Days and did a bunch of other opportunities for people to buy it. We've sold it at Christmas time and at the library and at the utility office. And we've sold over 3,500 puzzles so far. We have just over 2,000 puzzles remaining. So if you need one, want one, get one while supplies last. Last of all, want to highlight the library hall that is under construction immediately to our south here. Beautiful facility. It almost looks just like this, except the landscaping is not in yet. And we topped the building with the beam, the top beam, in January, and then construction continued. And we're going to show you some pictures inside of the, the facility taken today, give you a sense. This is in the children's library. It's beautiful. It will be very bright and light when it's done. A lot of, I'll use the word whimsical, fun. Carpet patterns and colors for the children in the, in the children's library. You'll see book stacks that will meander through here, kind of like rivers. It'll be very beautiful. You can't see inside of here, but this is a program room that is twice the size of our single program room. And we have two of those, so four times the size of our program rooms will be in our library. This next image is an entryway, and it doesn't look, well, it kind of looks like my bedroom as a teenager. But it'll be beautiful and welcoming here. Library is just off to the side here. This image is upstairs in the teen space. This is cubby spaces where teens can be. The carpet's in the process of being laid. This is where it is. This is where it will be probably shortly after this picture was taken. This is a view upstairs. Main Street is kind of behind us, and this is a balcony that the wood will disappear when this crane disappears, and a glass balcony will be there. This is the adult section of the library and the teen section of the library. When we did our survey of residents to try to nail down what they wanted out of our library, they wanted bright, open, airy spaces, and, and we've absolutely tried hard to and believe we've achieved that in the design. Super excited to be able to open this up in a couple of months for the public. Couple of months, I mean April. This is the heritage multipurpose room. It's a very large open room. It's a space that we don't have in our city today. It's a large open room. We can have events and gatherings in here. And then if we want to, these are actually bleachers, kind of like you'd see at a high school. They pull out, but they aren't just bleachers that you sit on, but actual backed chairs that can seat about 130 people. And so multipurpose functionality there, it'll be really nice for different venues and events that we may have going on. And then finally, when we get to May, we expect to have our first council meeting in this new council chambers. We're standing outside of the council chambers. This will be a glass wall here and a glass wall there. This is an entryway, and this is an entryway over here. The deus and, and staff positions, and then the, the public will sit back here. Beautiful facility, and it will seat a lot more people, and we'll be able to continue conducting business there, starting in May. I think that's it.
Well done. That's a lot.
Want to finish with anything?
Pardon?
That's a lot, that's a lot to go through without a finish. You don't have a.
Stay tuned for 2023.
Okay. Stay tuned.
I think I went long enough. We just end right there.
No, I appreciate it. That's a lot of good information. I can't reiterate it enough that the, the quality of life here in Spanish Fork, if you're a resident, you know, is, is second to none. And the intentional pieces that you saw there that are happening in 2022 are there to continue that quality of life, to maintain it and grow it for generations to come. So we're excited for the future, and it's, it's a fun past year to, to go over. So we appreciate the work of Nick and Seth to put that together. Appreciate the work of all of our department heads putting work together to inform the council last week in a work session about all the good things going on. So, so like Seth said, stay tuned. We've got more to come. And the official State of the City address will, will invite everybody in a larger chamber in, in May to, to, to share in that and, and celebrate opening of, of that beautiful area. Okay, anything else, council, before we move on? All right, we'll get some, some work done now. Item eight is, excuse me, before we go to item eight, number seven, consent items. Any question on any of the consent items? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items. Is that it?
Yep.
I've never done that before.
That's how you do it.
Okay, A through F. Jesse?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Carden to approve items A through F on the consent items agenda. A roll call vote, Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
That passes. Takes us to new business, the days of 47 rodeo contract. Mr. Dale Robinson, our Parks and Rec Director, all things rodeo, can go over this for us.
Okay, thank you. Just a little bit of brief history. In December, the rodeo committee for the Fiesta Days goes down to the PRCA Conference in Las Vegas. While there, we met with the rodeo committee from the days of 47. They are proposing to start what they are calling the Utah Rodeo Pioneers Program, which basically means they're taking the, the three rodeo, three main rodeos in Utah, Ogden Fiesta Days, and the Days of 47 in Salt Lake, and going to take the three top, or the top winner of, combined of those three rodeos. This is basically to encourage contestants to come and participate in all three rodeos. So as part of that, they are going to give the Days of 47, or they're going, they're going to give us, the Fiesta Days rodeo, $49,500 that'll go to the PRCA, raising our added money to encourage those contestants to come. They're going to do the same thing with the Ogden Pioneers Days rodeo. The obligation that we have, which is what this, the contract has a few minor things in there. The main thing that it's requiring us to do is to purchase a, a table at the State of Sports banquet. That, at that table, we will host three of those contestants and their significant partner others or whoever's coming with them. But the, we don't know what the cost is on it. Last year, it was $5,000. So that's an estimate for what we may be obligated to pay. So they're going to give us that added money. We're going to, in turn, redo, we're going to take some of that, but we'll reduce the amount of our added money in our rodeo budget. So basically, the net, net to us is like 500 bucks. So we'll use that extra money to purchase that table. So that's basically what this contract, it's a one-year contract, but that's what it obligates the city to do in exchange for that added money. It's a good program. This has kind of been in the works for many years. We've talked about it. A lot of this money is coming from travel and tourism. They're trying to get people into Utah to participate in Utah rodeos. And they figured by making this circuit with those three rodeos, and then they're offering a large amount of prize money. I probably didn't mention that. That's why they're going to the state of, the, the sport banquet for the state of Utah, is they're going to present all of these contestants that were the, the top average scores in the three rodeos with a significant cash bonus. So that's it. Any questions?
We've got a good rodeo.
We've got a good rodeo. It's a pretty big deal to add it to, if you talk to Nick, if you talk to Dale in more detail, the, the struggle with Utah rodeos is, rodeo's a big one, like Nampa in Idaho, happens at the same time. And so if you're trying to get the biggest contestants, cowboys and cowgirls, to be in Utah at your rodeos, this helps do that in saying, don't leave Utah. You've got, you've got Fiesta Days, you've got Days of 47, and you've got Ogden's Pioneer Days, is that what they are? Pioneer Days rodeo, so make sure and compete in those rodeos, because if you win that little circuit, you're going to have added money too. So it's a way to.
The whole goal is to try to keep them here. Keep the best state.
Makes sense.
Good work. Any questions for Dale on this? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Days of 47 rodeo contract.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Marshall to approve this contract. Roll call vote, Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
That's approved. Thank you, Dale. Thanks, Nick. Thank you, rodeo committee, for all the good work on that.
So what do you call them, cowboys and cowgirls or cowpeople?
Cowgirls and cowboys.
Okay, just checking.
Yep. Seth's giving me the head, yep. They do have two events. Here's the, here's the events that cowgirls are doing. Here's the events to cowboys.
Depends on who does it. Who does it?
Okay, item.
Big sad belly is.
Item B of new business is the Main Street to 600 North, 600 North Main Street to 1,000 North Main Street Reconstruction Project, UDOT Federal Aid Agreement. Mr. Chris Thompson.
Okay, we're really excited about this project. It's been many years in the making, where we have done some studies on how to make Main Street a lot nicer for businesses and for people, how to make it flow more smoother with less conflicts. And, and, and so we've gotten a grant through the Mountain Lines Association of Governments to do the first phase of this project, rebuilding Main Street from 10th North down to 600 North. And this is the federal aid agreement, which commits a bunch of federal money to this. UDOT, in turn, is also committing $2 million to this. And then the city's match will be 6.77% of, of the cost beyond that $2 million.
Any questions?
So it's, what, five and a half million? And the city's contributing quarter of a million, roughly?
Yeah, yeah, about that.
And this isn't defining a concept necessarily. This is just an agreement to make the money available till you start designing.
Yeah, so, so once this is in place, we plan to take two years to design this. We want to make sure we get it right. We want to make sure we work with the businesses along Main Street. We have a design that will really look good and feel good and flow and work well and, and be good for the, the businesses there along Main Street. And this will set the tone for the rest of Main Street. Our intent is to keep going with this with future grants all the way down Main Street.
So you said that the planning phase will take two years. When do you anticipate construction starting?
2005.
Five? Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
We're going back in ways.
That's what we wanted it done.
Any other questions for Chris on this? So starting the ball rolling here, there, there will be something done between 600 North and 1,000 North on Main Street. It'll start to be designed, so it's not going to happen tomorrow, but it's in the works, and, and the money's being procured for that.
Very exciting.
Okay, very exciting stuff. Yep, good work, and, and this is going to be a good project. I'd entertain a motion if there's no more questions for Chris.
I move to approve the Main Street 600 North to 1,000 North Reconstruction Project, UDOT Federal Aid Agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Euler. Roll call vote here, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Kathleen, we'll look to you in the chamber when we start reaching out to businesses on Main Street, talking to them about these projects, for sure. Okay, item C, the Utah Local Matching $1 million Grant Contract for Spanish Fork City, five, what is MG?
Million gallons.
Million gallon tank. Okay.
So we've been working on a project for quite some time to replace two deteriorating tanks near the mouth of the canyon. One was a 1 million gallon tank, the other a 2 million gallon tank, with one big 5 million gallon tank. This was, this was bid out with what's called a CMGC contract, where we actually used the contractor to help us design it and make sure that we're doing it in the best quality way, but most cost-effective way as well. And as this contractor, in conjunction with us, bid out a lot of the concrete work, concrete prices and labor prices were quite high, beyond budget, beyond bond budget. And, and so we reached out for a federal grant, a grant through the state of Utah with some federal monies to get $1 million to help with those costs. And, and that grant was awarded. This is the agreement to make those funds available to us. We are still on the hook to pay the balance of the $7.6 million cost to do this tank.
We come up with that through our funds of, in our water department, right?
Yeah, we actually anticipated this project for some time. Several years ago, before the latest interest rate hikes, the, the banks were telling the city that interest rates were at the lowest they had been in, in the history that they've known. And it was 1.62% at that point. And so we, we, we knew this project was coming and, and a couple other projects. And so we went and we bonded for about $10 million to do these projects. And so the balance of it is coming from, from that bond monies and then existing city funds that we have in our cash reserves.
Perfect. Any questions for Chris on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
What happens to the old tanks?
Good question. The question was.
Okay, so, so the old tanks, they're, they're actually in the place where this new tank is going in. And so they're, they're, one has already been demolished. The one that actually is in the place where this new one will go. And then the other one will be demolished as well. As we, as we got in and started caving in the roofs, they, they didn't have much life left in them anyway. So, so, good question.
And the new one we brought online, about?
It, it'll take us about a year, year and a half to, to construct it.
And also have water?
Yeah, yeah. Spanish Fork has a very robust water system and plenty of, plenty of capacity. This is, this is more planning for the future. So we have, we have a half a dozen tanks, so.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve Utah Local Matching $1 million Grant Contract, the number as outlined, for the Spanish Fork 5 million gallon tank.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote here, Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
That is approved. Item C is approved. Takes us to item D, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Non-Disclosure Agreements. Mr. Vaughn Pecel.
Mayor and council, from time to time, we get a request to sign a non-disclosure agreement involving often real estate transactions to keep that, that price and that information secret or proprietary information that a business might have or an economic development. or proprietary information that a business might have or an economic development project that may be looking to locate in Spanish Fork. And so we get them occasionally, you know, one or two a year maybe. We did have one recently, Project Merlin. That's a code name for an economic development project through the EDC Utah. And so they've put us in touch with that group and they've asked us to sign that agreement. Mayor signed that. The resolution tonight would ratify that that agreement, but also authorize the city manager to sign these as they come forward in the future after review by the city attorney or someone in my office, so. Any questions about what they are, why we do them?
So currently, it goes through the legal department. You're the one that signs those?
No, I don't sign them. They go to the mayor right now.
Okay.
And just because they're they're fairly routine and and often very similar to one to another. So we didn't think it needed to be something you'd have to approve all the time. But we we've make sure that they comply with grandma so that if there's a records request that they're either they're clear that they they are that they're exempt from grandma or that they comply with grandma.
Any questions? Again, pretty routine in a in an area where economic development, pretty robust in Spanish Fork. Those companies routine and Vaughn, you've been in a different city, so you can experience this there too. But private entities want to keep it private until.
Until they want to make it public.
They want to make it public.
I also should mention, sometimes there's like an urgent need for it because they want to start negotiations. And if we're limited to our calendar of meetings, it's tough sometimes to get them approved.
Perfect. Thank you, Vaughn.
You're welcome.
If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion on item D.
I move to approve Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Execute Non-Disclosure Agreements.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Marshall.
Thank you.
Roll call vote here, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
All right. Item D is approved. Takes us to section nine of the agenda. These are discussion items here. We have two discussion items. A is flood control and B is welcome to Spanish Fork signage plan. Seth is going to discuss our flood control.
Actually, we're going to have Chris do that in just a moment. He just needed me to buy him some time. So I have a joke. I'm just kidding. I have a joke for you, but but what we're going to do for the next couple of meetings, there are a handful of topics that we didn't have time to get to at our work session in Zermatt. And so we'll pick those up. You had some of that earlier today in in the work session. And and these will be some items from carrying over from those discussions as well. Specifically, right now, we wanted to touch on the flood control because that is something that we think the public is going to be very interested in as as Chris moves through the details of the snowpack and efforts to make sure that the river is in as good a shape, if you will, to handle the runoff that we believe will come. And I can see that Chris's slide is ready to go, so I will yield the remainder of my time to him for this discussion on flood control. And when Chris is down, we'll have Nick pick up his discussion on some welcome signage package.
I can tell you before Chris starts, some good meetings about a week ago, in conjunction with the county and Jamie and your your department, Chris, talking about some of those sensitive areas of flood history in Spanish Fork because some of those are counties, some of those are inside the city. But working hand in glove with the county is going to be an important part of how we successfully try to control Mother Nature in a way that that's not easy to do, so.
Yeah, yeah, we have a great relationship with the county and and we work really close on the river. And I think, you know, every year, we seem to address flood control quite a bit. Our our motto is every year is going to be a flood year and we're going to try to get ready in case something happens. The last two years, it's been a little half-hearted with very little snow in the mountains. But this year, it's a little different. We've had a lot of snow. And and with that, I wanted to show you something. This is a graph of the flow in the river. Last year, this is what the flow in the river looked at like at this time. You'll notice that it peaked up in the middle of the day when it got warm and 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 the snow was melting. And then at night, the river went way down. You'll notice here, it's staying at a fairly high level, but it's not really peaking or 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 going down much. And and that's in large measure because of how cold it's been. The snow up in the mountains and out the canyon, it just isn't melting. And so it's staying up there, which is kind of a concern. The other concern is it's it's at a pretty high flow. What if we did have a warm day? I think this is actually reflective of what this is. And if you if we had warm days, you would see some pretty high peaks. We typically, and this sounds harsh, but Jamie and Hayden, who were here earlier, they go and work in the river when it's really cold. It was five degrees and they were out working in the river. And the reason is is because the flows are are low and and they're nervous about going out there when we have a warm day and and the flows pick up significantly. And they're they are pretty high right now. So just something to watch. We we track this very closely. Every fifteen days, we'll we'll plot this out. We're probably going to ramp it up to once a week where we'll we'll look at this and we'll send out an email and post it and kind of show where we're at. But if you could go to the.
Chris, before you move on, what is, give us some context about what that peak is and what that yellow line is like. What is flood? What is a flood CFS?
A flood CFS is probably around, we we think it's between 3,300 and 3,500, so.
We're a long way away from.
Yes, yes. That comes with spring runoff. And what what you would have to have in order to get to 3,300 or 3,500 CFS would be maybe a warm rain or a really warm day. But usually, you see the worst flooding when you have warm rain up in the mountains in 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 May. That's and and it's still a lot of snow in the mountains at that time, so.
Chris, I think it's worth noting as well, the hydrology of the river, as well as the function of water running off in the mountains, is different since the fires in 2018. So we have a lot more water that comes off of the mountain just because there isn't the the vegetation on the side of the hill. So we'll we'll see how that affects the runoff this year. As Chris said, last year, I don't even think we noticed the water go up in when the did the melt happen. But with the coal fire and the other fires in 2018, it may, the mountain may act differently and which may affect the river.
It's a really good point, and and debris, a lot of, you know, dead wood and things. Usually have debris flow problems after that. Here's here's a more broad view of of how we track that, the stream flows. I'm going to go on to the snowpack. What we have here is is this purple line is is what the the snowpack was in in equivalent water inches in 1984, which is when we saw the the most amount of water in the Spanish Fork River. The year before that was 1983, which was this blue line and which, if you'll notice, the the melt didn't happen till well into May, about mid-May, before it got warm and the snow stopped falling. And then we got some warm rains in May and all of that water came down at once. This is when we had the worst flooding, but we would have far worse flooding in 1984 had we not armored the river and dug it out and done a lot of things to prepare for it.
So eighty-three, as far as flood year, was worse than eighty-four?
We had worse flooding, but we had more.
Water.
Quantity of water coming down the river in eighty-four. So those are two, these are the two years that we watch. And we got really nervous in 2011, which is shown by this yellow line because we got kind of up in the eighty-three, eighty-four range. And we kind of got out here to beginning of May, and there's still a lot of snow pack in the mountains. And so we got really nervous. And then something happened. It rained every three days. Just every three days, we got rain. And so you'll notice what would happen is we get we get a significant amount of water coming down the river, and then it got cold. And then significant water got cold. And then you notice it came down at a a much gentler slope than than eighty-three and eighty-four. So we're watching the snowpack now. This is the green line for this year. And we're venturing into some uncharted territory right now. And so it's kind of making us nervous. We're we are not doing half-hearted flood control measures this year. We are getting pretty serious about it. We're about 19% above where we were in eighty-four at this time, 24% above 2011 and 73% where we were in nineteen eighty-three. So we just, for fun, we were like, if we had the same amount of snow that we did starting on this day in nineteen eighty-three, basically this curve.
Yeah.
Was attached to there, we would land right where that O is on forecast. So that's a lot of that's a lot of moisture. Anyway.
Back one real quick, though. I mean, I think it's it's good to point out that eighty-four was bad. Eighty-three was, we had back-to-back years of a lot of snowpack, a lot of moisture. Storage was pretty well full by the time eighty-four rolled around. We're not in that situation this year. We have a ton of storage. As long as we can get it down to the storage, we'll be okay.
Yeah, we we are so happy about this.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure we're prepared for the flood, but we can use this water in all our reservoirs in Utah Lake, Great Salt Lake. This is really good for the state, so we just want to make sure we don't damage we damage as little amount of property as possible, getting that water from up in the mountains down into the into the reservoirs. Yeah, good point. So we have a number of measures that we're taking to get ready for the fire. We've ordered another 10,000 sandbags, which means we'll have 27,000 total. We purchased 80 feet of of a miam modular flood barrier, which I'm going to show you in a little bit. We 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 bought 400 feet of muscle wall with the NiBo Agency. We're about a third of that agency, so assuming everyone's flooding, we could get about a third of those if we needed them. We ordered another chipper for aggressive river work to be done. And we ordered a bunch of chainsaw, a new chainsaw, a bunch of blades, some chokers and some PPE. One thing that we noticed in 2011 is by the beginning of the flood season, you couldn't buy those things. They were just not in stock. And so we we've ordered those early so that we'd have them in hand. We've coordinated with the county. We had a meeting. Mayor was able to come. And we met with the county down there and talked about how we're going to attack getting the river ready for flood season. And we're coordinating with the I-15 about a certain, I mean, with UDOT, about a certain I-15 culvert that is kind of a problem with the river. And so we have kind of a plan of attack on that 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 we did in 2011. It worked. And then we're coordinating with other divisions and departments in the city to help as as needed. And then finally, we anticipate there being a lot of free firewood at certain sites along the river, if any of the public is interested. So I want to get that up.
Let me ask you, let me ask you about this. So I moved into the home that I live in now in December of 2010. By spring of 2011, there were piles of sand in our cul-de-sac as people were preparing for what could have been some bad flooding. And the river did get really high in 2011. Is there a plan to start or have we got locations designated where we will put sand and have the bags available?
Yeah, yeah. And and the nice thing about that is the river, this isn't a flash flood issue. This is the river's rising and and we start taking measures like stockpiling sandbags or putting out muscle walls. You have you have some time to to react to this. Even even eighty-three, eighty-four, they saw it rising. They they had reaction time. They could put out the sandbags and and do those things. So so what we will do is is we'll have the sand and the sandbags in place. And then as as properties start to be threatened, then we'll we'll dump the sand or or bring the sandbags or the or the barriers and and do that. But but we don't, we don't do that. You know, if we if we would have done that in 2011 all over, and and even in 2011, we ended up not needing it, but we were ready. And so we just kind of watch it.
My question was to your last point there, Chris, the free firewood. How will, you know, obviously we want the public to take that. How will they know where that is and how to get that?
Once we get those piled up and cut, we don't really want them to come until that point, then we'll publish the spots where they can come pick it up.
Social media.
We did the same thing in 2011. It worked out really well.
Nick's got us.
Can't pick it up. Nick will. Nick will be our guy on that.
You gonna collect it for him?
He'll haul it for you. So I give you a wheelbarrow?
But it's just like like here's here's an example. The river starts raising. You go along the trail. You put the sandbags up. You usually have plenty of time and and then as it rises, you can you can go on it. But one thing that that we've been looking at is our sandbags. It's kind of old-fashioned technology. Maybe maybe we've advanced beyond sandbags a little bit. And and one thing is something called the muscle wall where you you can have one thing that you can fill full of of water. And it works very well, and it takes place of 468 sandbags, which is a lot easier on everyone's backs. So we we have a bunch of those. Here's some more of those. And we happen to have a trail right along the river, which a large reason why we did the trail is for flood control. We have this this new technology, which takes a lot less space than those those muscle walls. It's called the miam modular flood barrier. And you look at that and you think, put that by someone else's house. I want those flood walls. I want I want the muscle walls. Don't give me the miam. And but I want to show you something. It actually works pretty pretty well. Here's a picture of, they did something to protect these storage units here and and the flood went by and.
That doesn't look fake at all.
There's a shark somewhere.
That's what they look at.
That's on their website.
I'll ask them. Anyway, we 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 like how easy that are to put out and and the water kind of sits on the. I lost it. Okay, the water sits on that toe here, I guess, and and it holds it in place. And they lock and they're pretty watewater tight. There's a sealing mechanism in here so that if you have it on like a trailer or something like that, it just seals your handle. Keep it dry. All right, I'll ask them. All right. Here's here's our deal with the county. In reality, this part of the river is is in the county. And so you could say, well, they have some responsibility there. The problem is, it has a huge effect on this part of the river, which is in the city where we have some homes. And so whether the county cleans it or not, we're going to make sure it gets cleaned. And we met with the county, and the county has every river in, you know, in the valley and up the canyons. And and they only have so many resources. And so what we worked out with them is is they would focus on this, on the south side of the river, where we have some difficulty getting into the properties there. And then we will focus on where we have put trails. And and we have some dirt roads here where we can easily get in and we can pull out the the trees that are falling into the river. And so we're going to focus on all of this. We're also kind of looking at, we've gone up the canyon a little bit and looked for debris. And 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 we're assessing what it would take to to get some of those things out of the river as well. Right here is a key. Uh, right here uh, is a key point. And that is where we have this this bridge for I fifteen. We have uh, two waterways under the bridge, which were designed for all of the capacity of the river during a flood. Uh, we asked them to put this third one in, uh, this third culvert in for a future trail and for flood overflow. So there's plenty of capacity to get all the floodwaters and and and, you know, the thirty-five hundred that Shane was talking about uh, down through there. The worry is is having debris catch on these two um, uh, mid-supports. These are actually uh, three culverts, individual culverts. And then this is just put in to try to encourage the debris to go around. Uh, I actually took some of my kids and kayaked through that. That was pretty exciting. Uh, I wouldn't recommend it.
You just ditched nose on them.
No, no, plain of clearance, but uh, anyway. I think it'll work as long as we do not have uh, debris lined up here. And so what we did in two thousand eleven with UDOT is they have a really large trackhoe. They set it right here and just when when the river rose and things came down, they just kept cleaning it and kept cleaning it out and it seemed to work out pretty well. So that's something that we're really concerned about. We're mostly concerned about what's in the city and where there are homes. Uh, right through here, we built a levee. If if you walk along the trail, along the river, you'll notice that there's a berm on the house side of the trail and that's that's a certified levee. We do annual maintenance uh, every year on that to make sure there's no woody vegetation growing in it, uh, that it's in good order. And and that levee uh, protects all of these homes. We we're actually uh, pretty feel pretty good about all of these homes here. Um, this is a flood, uh, a floodway here that uh, this park, which we actually intend to be flooded during the flood years. Um, you'll know, if you go out there, you can see the levee actually cir- circles the park like this. Um, you'll notice that all of these homes here are not in the floodplain, but they still make us nervous. And so uh, even though hydraulically in theory, they're not in the floodplain, we feel like that's where we need to watch. And if if the river ri- rises, this is where we'd put those those flood barriers or sandbags or something like that. But mostly to protect their backyards from being destroyed. Uh, supposedly, according to engineering models that that FEMA's accepted, their homes are out of the floodplain. But I went, I was down in in El Paso, Texas, where they had the same thing, uh, where there weren't any homes in 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 a certain area uh, in the hundred-year floodplain. And then they got a five-hundred-year flood. And guess what happened to those homes? They were swept away. So uh, we we uh, we realized that this is a hundred-year flood. Uh, and and a lot of people say, well, how come we get hundred-year floods every thirty years? And uh, uh, the the FEMA response to that is it's a one percent, there's a one percent chance that you'll have that flood every year. And and apparently that means you'll likely get one about every thirty years. And it and it's happened. Eighty-three, the last ones were fifty-two, eighty-three. Uh, we're kind of living on borrowed time here. Two thousand eleven was right on the thirty-year mark, but we didn't end up getting flooded. We just had a lot of water. So at any rate, we we take it seriously and if we don't want a hundred-and-twenty-year flood to take any any houses in Spanish Fork. So we take it very seriously. Uh, I think this is where Kevin was talking about. We dumped a bunch of sand here. We're ready to go in case, you know, the river rose. I think we put some out and it did protect some of the backyards there and and uh, we're we're primed and ready to go again on that.
Chris, before you go off this screen, so you can see kind of where the the floodplain is. A lot of the homes that you talked about up in that north section, even though in two thousand eleven, they the river itself didn't breach, their sump pumps were going twenty-four seven. So can you talk to the groundwater and how a big spring storm like this would affect groundwater?
Yeah, yeah. Everyone's flooding right now. And there's water everywhere. We get a rain. When when the rain comes and melts all the snow here, we're gonna have dozens of basements flooded with water. Uh, the groundwater is rising. Sump pumps are pumping around the clock. It's it, this is something that that everyone should plan on. Uh, watch your basements, watch your window wells. Uh, if this, if we got warm rain in the next couple of weeks, all that snow in your backyard would melt and a lot of it might come into your window well and 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 flood your basement. So it's something to that everyone should be watching and 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 the groundwater is going to be high. And so if you have a problem or maybe in your crawl space, you have groundwater that comes in, make sure your sump pumps are working. Make sure you have a backup and and uh, and that's that's what we can expect in a year like this.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions about that? Here's a list of what we're doing again. I don't know why I have that one in there, but there it is.
So this is a, this is a graph of, this is a graph of the runoff in eleven. So what Chris was trying to ask give you a visual of shows you how much time you do have to watch the water go up. So Chris, if you'll notate in April, that kind of the beginning of the second melt. And then, yeah, you, until you get to the high high water stages in in May, it's about a two-week process. But you you can see each day how it kind of goes up and down, up and down.
We kind of peaked out around two thousand CFS, maybe nineteen, eighteen hundred CFS, and 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 the river held it just fine. Uh, but we think in the thirty-three, thirty-five hundred, that's when we're going to be losing backyards and things like that.
Well, if you, if UDOT or the city or whomever on one of those obstructions gets, if it gets too much at two thousand, you're getting someone's backyard because we can't clean it out fast enough and it backs up.
Now, you get a lot of good trees coming around a bend and blocking it up. Uh, if you can't get to it in time, it can back it up. So we're watching it.
That was a crazy year. That culvert underneath I fifteen was lapping at those curders the entire time.
Yeah, there. There any plans to do any wall improvements to the river this year as far as rocks or anything like that?
Maybe, we'll see.
Two thousand eleven, you know, a lot of that was done, but.
That's heavily regulated by this state stream alteration, so.
One of my favorite things about the runoff is that the river gets a lot wider. So in two thousand eleven, at certain places, you'd you'd see the river as sixty feet wide. And if you go down there today, you'd say, how is that possible? Uh, but it's actually quite healthy for the stream, for this kind of flow to happen. It pushes out a lot of the debris that's just fallen inside of there too. So we need this. Well, number one, we need the water, like Chris said, and and this is really healthy for the river environment too. So we, it's not something to be too afraid of, but it's certainly something that we watch.
Like we talked about CERT earlier, right? They have a response team. I'm assuming that we have something similar or ahead of that. Is that something that you had? Like getting people where they need to go to go and respond? Or is that Seth? Or who who kind of manages that when it is that two-week lead time?
So what we would do is we'd reach out to to uh, Trevor and 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 say, well, we're gonna dump a bunch of sand here. We'll deliver the bags. You might want to organize CERT teams to go. Uh, it didn't get to that in two thousand eleven because you you make a call to a church leader and there's two thousand people wanting to fill bags and you never have enough sand to actually, you know, everyone fills one bag and takes it to the river and they're done. And so uh,
If we do need help, Nick will, Nick will put it on social media again?
Yeah, I I'm sure. Uh, it would, it would be pretty dire to get that, that point, I think. This is a really good thing to show because it it you can see how days, it took days before it got to here. So that that's a lot of okay, it's coming, that we can we can respond.
We got some some months and and weeks before we get to that point, but I guess here's the here's the first word of caution. When it starts to warm up enough that, you know, we decide, okay, I'm not gonna die walking down the trail because it's, what is it when you run the trail today, Seth? Ten degrees in the morning?
Uh, it was a balmy twenty-one. Yeah, it was great.
Twenty-one, yeah, it was great.
It was fantastic.
Weirdos that will be on the trail. Twenty-one, but when it's, you know, in the spring, when it's fifty-five and that feels like seventy-five to us and it's sixty and stuff, just make sure that river is going to look a lot different than the calm kayaking river that we can do in the summer. Um, it's a tragedy to hear it every year. It reported on the news of of all the, you know, families that get out and enjoy it and then a kid just gets too close. So just be careful. The the trail's there for a dual purpose. Obviously, it invites everybody to see the beauty of those farmers' fields and 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 our area and how pretty it is. Uh, and and we want you to be on it, but here's the word of caution. Just be super careful. Your your pets, your kids, you get in a river flowing that high that it's going to flow this year and it'll be hard to get out. It'll be really hard to get out. So um, be careful. Be careful when that time comes.
Yeah, and you, uh, one thing I wanted to point out with this image is you've got this melt, this is the one that Chris was showing, kind of stair-step down, right? It took about a month and a half. And if you recall from his image, he was talking about how, or he was showing the river today at at the graph you thought was kind of high at ninety and Councilman Marshall said, give me some context, right? Ninety cubic feet per second. We're still flowing at seven, eight hundred cubic feet per second in July. That was a fantastically long melt. Um, and at seven hundred cubic feet per second, uh, we probably won't have access to the underpass at Main Street on the trail. So we, it's been a few years since anybody's seen this, but we have that gate that says, go around, right? Go up onto Main Street, take the light, cross, you can't go underneath the bridge. That sidewalk will be underwater. Uh, and it could be underwater for a couple of months. Uh, and and like you said, you just want to stay away from it. There's a lot of currents that you just can't see. And so there's there's stuff underneath there that you can't see. And so if you think you can walk on it because it's not very deep and all of a sudden you stumble on a stick or a rock or a stump or something, you still want to put yourself in that situation.
Okay, good information. Thank you for that update and uh, watch for more updates as we get transitioning from the long bleak cold winter to a to a springtime uh, in Spanish Fork. Okay, uh, welcome to Spanish Fork signage. Here's item B. Seth had a beard one day. Yep.
Well, thanks for the time. Um, Councilmember Beck texted me and said, Nick, don't screw this up. Because she is a fan of and has been pushing some of these welcome signs. So um, this is the monument sign of South I fifteen, southbound that we redid a couple of years ago. Um, I just want to do, kind of walk through what we have in place and and then what you want to see. Let me first start by reading a letter uh, that was addressed to you uh, in December. It said, dear Spanish Fork Council, and my guess is is this gal is uh, between third and fifth grade in Spanish Fork. So she said, my name is Mailey Mortenson, and if you'd look at the letter, you know where I live. I want to say that you should put a sign up by the Revere Health. The one you have is small. When you get off the freeway, there is a big sign for Salem. I want our town to be recognized, so we should put one up so they know where they, when they have entered our awesome town. I love Spanish Fork and living here. My favorite thing is the rodeo and our town should be recognized. Well, that's all. Bye. And then she wrote, and then she drew you some pictures uh, and said Merry Christmas. So um, just want to highlight, the one you have up is small and she's right. It's about that big. Uh, as you get off the freeway, uh, just off to the right side. You, I missed it. I had to slam on my brakes and pull over to get this picture. So she's not wrong. So I want to walk through um, kind of our major entrances. And as I do this, there's there's three terms that I'm going to use. One is monument sign. One is oh, now I can't remember the other term. Uh, I think two-post sign and then they call this a mini sign. Uh, so those are are the three we have. And I just want to talk about these nine entrances uh, to Spanish Fork. In no particular order, but kind of a particular order, uh, we'll start with I fifteen. So that currently has a monument sign, uh, the one that we saw at the beginning. Northbound I fifteen has the mini sign that Mailey referred to. Uh, if you're coming eastbound on US six, uh, meaning from I fifteen, that's our new two-post sign that went up uh, in August. Uh, westbound Highway six, there is not a sign, uh, but we do have a monument sign planned in conjunction with the water tank project. And the funding for that sign will be in uh, next fiscal year's budget when I talk to Byron for an update there. So that's the current plan for that entrance. As you come in um, from Springville on Highway fifty-one or State Street, there's currently nothing there. As you come in on Main Street uh, from Springville, there's one of the mini signs, the twenty-four inch signs. And North Main Street from Salem has actually a green sign that just says, entering Spanish Fork, um, one of the boundary signs. Just how most of them used to be before we put the mini signs up uh, two years ago. When you come across the bridge on four hundred north, um, there's a mini sign there. That one's pretty difficult because there's not a place to put any other sign in that spot as soon as you cross the border. And then coming in from Maple's ten again, right across the train tracks is is a mini sign. So what I would like from you and we would like from you is we, uh, staff works on the budget is what, what do you want to see? Uh, and how aggressively do you want to see those signs there? Um, just for some context, here, here are the costs for our last signs that we did. Um, keep in mind that both of these are, they're structures. They both have foundations, uh, at least thirty-inch foundations even for for this two-inch sign that's off US six. So um, that's why we have the mini signs up because those are pretty easy to put in with a with a pole dri- a post driver. But these are our actual structures and um, and that's the costs that that are associated. But what are your your thoughts and and feelings? Where where would your focus, where would you like us to focus? How quickly? And you have a chance to speak before Councilmember Beck weighs in.
I don't dare. I think definitely, definitely our main traffic locations where we've got them coming off of I fifteen currently. The North Main Street exit, I think, is a great, great one that we've got in. I'm glad to hear that there's one going to be going in as you come in from the canyon. I think that's a great location for a monument sign. It's difficult to say with with, for example, number two, with the Benjamin one. Depending on how how the city continues to grow right there, it doesn't make sense for a monument sign if a few years down the road, that's no longer the entrance to Spanish Fork, right? And then then how difficult is it to tear up and relocate a monument sign? And so I think we need to consider future growth as well and one considering where our signs are going to go.
I agree.
That's a good point. I think specifically talking about about the young residents concerned here, it feels like regardless of the Spanish Fork ended years from now out here, we still have traffic that enters Spanish Fork here, right? And comes to our services this way.
You're down one. This is the best.
This is, this is the exit.
That's forth north, right? So here you may exit the attractions that we have here, here, you know, I guess your hospital, they'll take, they'll get up here before they get there. But regardless of if you grew out here, feels like, feels like you'd see that.
It doesn't, I don't know that it has to be on the border of of the town.
That's that's true. Yeah, there are some of those little side streets, but.
So I I think something like that monument sign on one and two and four makes makes some sense. It's gonna be difficult to put one on two. It's going to be difficult to put one on two just because of the right of way and UDOT and the rules surrounding that. But a two-post waste?
Waste?
Oh, it's late night. A two-post sign at two makes a lot of sense. Like, that little tiny mini sign is offensive.
I agree.
And I think also here at five something, at least, you know, maybe not a mini. Those mini signs are hard to see. But as we're bringing people in from Springville and from different places, really, you know, setting the tone for what our city is, a two-post sign makes sense.
And specifically here, do you want to see one where that mini sign is? I think it's close here on the border. But it's kind of, it's a wacky border as you come through this area. And Mapleton's, or sorry, Salem's sign is right here.
It's just right on the other side of the Salem side.
See if we can use their concrete base.
Yeah, just put it on top.
Number six, number six is kind of an interesting one, too, because the border, the border of the city has been established and set right there. That's not going to change. You've got Springville directly on the other side of that one. And Springville does have a larger sign right there. And it does kind of bother me a little bit when I drive that and see a large Springville sign and then...
There's a lot of feelings and emotions with this topic.
But it almost, but it almost seems like you could do something here near where the airport entrance is, right? Because it doesn't have to be at the border like Shane had mentioned. Could you do something in conjunction with the airport?
Yeah, I think that that road that you're talking about especially...
And we're going to have a new interchange, too. So that's definitely consideration.
But I think maybe number six, personally, I would like to see a larger sign there than the mini. Doesn't need to be, well, maybe it could be a monument, knowing that that border isn't going to change. That will always be an entrance to Spanish Fork.
Are you going to give us Councilwoman Beck's answers to this quiz?
No, I just think I know what they are. She hasn't told me. She just said, don't mess it up.
It seems like the monument one should be left for those that wouldn't normally come, like off I-15, off of 6. You're coming from a longer distance away. The smaller signs could be more of from Springville, from Salem, from something, you know, it's more of an intercity thing than...
It's a good little sound.
The mini signs should just not be put up. Like, why bother? I don't know that I've ever noticed.
We have a lot of little roads, but okay. Okay, that's helpful. Seth, did you have anything you wanted to?
That was great, Beck. I took some notes for you.
Good luck with Councilwoman Beck.
Thank you.
We won't tell her. You blew it.
She's watching.
No, she better not be.
She's not passionate about it. She's watching.
That's a good new, not very new anymore, but our logo speaks well to us. The Latinos in Action mentioned the bell tower and the belt city. And it's becoming a brand that people know and see, part of our logo. And so, yes, make sure incorporate that for residents young and old to be proud of when you enter Spanish Fork. Good discussion. Okay, that takes us to item 10.
I got it. I move to go into closed session for land transaction and strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonable imminent litigation.
Can I read the whole thing? How's it?
No, you just specify which areas you're going. Which of those reasons?
Shane, don't mess up my motion.
I apologize.
Got it, yeah.
Councilmember Gardon.
Okay, motion made to go into closed session by Councilman Cardon.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Euler to go into closed session. A roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
We're in closed session. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks.